Would you please write for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was a beautiful sound.
It was.
It was.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for being here. Uh, introductions, presentations, and proclamations, we-
Mayor, can we do a, uh, roll call, please?
Oh, yeah, we gotta do that next, sorry. I forget that part. How about a roll call?
Sure. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Grineal.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
I'm kinda here.
And our town attorney is present remotely.
All right. All right, now introductions, presentations, and proclamations, we have none. Call the public. Would you like to do that one?
Surely. Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within their jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for call to the public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. I did not have any, um, comment cards for pub- comment.
Okay. Is there no one that, anyone that would like to speak about the public comment? Okay, seeing them, we're gonna move on. Current event summaries and reports. This item is for information only. The mayor, any council member, or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events. If listed below, there may also be a presentation on information requested by the mayor and council, and questions may be answered. No action will be taken. Status reports by mayor and council regarding current events. I have nothing. How about over on this side, gentlemen?
Nothing.
Nothing here.
Uh, Little League starts April 2nd. Open ceremonies.
April 2nd.
April 2nd.
At the community center.
The community center.
Got it. How about over here?
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. It's not really a commu- uh, current event, but this is the most people I've seen in, uh, town hall in eight years. I don't know how long I've been in the building, but, um, thank you for your involvement. We know it's a issue that everyone's concerned about, and I'm, it was a beautiful sound to hear the Pledge of Allegiance with all y'all in the background, so thank you.
I agree.
All right, I'm it. That's it.
Tom?
The, uh, recently Eric, John, and I attended, uh, Urban Land Institute training down in Phoenix. Uh, heavy emphasis on urban land and what they plan to do with it. And just as a note for people's information, eighty-seven percent of the large real estate companies dealing with urban land are owned and operated by females.
Interesting.
All right. Cindy Blackmore, do you have anything over there?
No, Mayor.
All right, moving on. Consent agenda. All those items below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Anything to remove?
Not here.
No.
Not over here.
No.
Nope.
All right, I'll entertain the motion.
I make a motion, we approve consent agenda items five, A, B, C, D, E, F, as written.
Second.
Motion made. Two seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Action items. Council may vote to go to recess the public meeting and hold executive session on any item on this agenda pursuant to ARS 38431.03A3 for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public and no action may be taken in executive session. Item 6A, public hearing and consideration and possible action regarding ordinance 2022-915 to rezone approximately thirty point one five acres of real property from the agricultural residential five acre minimum AR5 to commercial heavy with a planned area development overlay, CHPAD, for the property located south of 2820 North Road 1 East in Chino Valley, Arizona, APN 30614026A. Applicant Jeremy Bach, Will Dunji Senior Planner, and Bethan, you're there. Hit your button.
Check, check.
There you go.
Really?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Bethan Heng, planner with the town. Tonight, the item before you is a request for a rezone for an RV park, Zangray RV Park. The applicant is in attendance tonight, um, and would like to request a continuation to a date certain of June 28th. Uh, he is here tonight. He can explain why he'd like the continuation.
Okay. Would you like to hear that?
Sure.
All righty.
Uh, Mayor, Council, my name's Jeremy Bach from Camp Verde, Arizona. Uh, the reason for the continuation is, um, we'd like to go back potentially to P and Z. Obviously, meet with Rachel and the rest of the community till a little bit to see if there's something else we can do on, on this parcel. Um, we would like to develop it as an RV park, but sometimes that doesn't work that way. Um, but I didn't do a good job in the beginning with meeting with some of the members of the community. Um, I'd like and have an opportunity to do that. Um, to form a traffic study opportunity, which was some of the P and Z members have talked about. Also to go over some of the water concerns based on what's there. We did do quite a bit of concessions on the layout in order to try to make it fit more in the community. Maybe some more rendering, some thought, some stuff of that nature, but like to get with, you know, Rachel and, and the, the group there and see if there's, if we can get this back on track. So I'd really like then for your, for your consideration for a continuation, please.
All right, thank you, sir. Any comments, questions on this side?
No.
How about over here? Sorry, I didn't see.
I, I have comment and question. Um, it seems like, from what I can see, we're kind of in uncharted territory when it comes to the situation we're in with the planning and zoning saying nay, we're asking for a continuance and any changes would have to go back to planning and zoning anyway, which he mentioned. So, so is that the right thing to do, to continue it? Or do we end this, make a decision one way or the other, and if he needs to go regroup and go back to planning and zoning, then he just starts anew? I mean, is that the right way to do it? Or should we do a, an actual continuance of what we've got going right now? That's my question.
Um, I appreciate the willingness to do a traffic impact analysis study. I know those are not cheap, um, before it's required. Um, my understanding is that it will not, it will not have to go back through planning and zoning unless a major change is made. Um, it would still just come right back to us instead of going through the planning and zoning process if we, um, approve the extension. And I yield.
Comments down here?
No, I agree. You're, you're, you're right, Lon, about that. It's kinda different if he has to go back to P and Z, but I don't think there's what he's proposing at this point unless Will and company say otherwise later. It's significant enough to require a new, um, P and Z hearing. So, we, and we've continued for lesser items.
What was the date he requested? What was the date he requested?
June 26th, I think I heard.
Twenty-eight. Two-eight.
Huh?
Two-eight. J- June 28th.
Oh, twenty-eight, excuse me. I thought two-eight, that's February. It's already passing.
Hi, Will.
Hi.
Will, go ahead and answer that question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so, in regards to a with, i- i- if the applicant was to withdraw or there was a vote tonight and it was a denial based, um, town code currently states that it ha- the applicant would have to wait a year in order to reapply for the same project. Um, so just some facts to bring forth. Um, if the council would wish that the item go back to Planning and Zoning Commission, I believe that you can make that motion that it returns to Planning and Zoning before it comes back to council. Um, I believe Andrew might be able to clarify on that if that's true, um, or the, the, the case. Um, but happy to answer any questions about policy that, um, the council might have.
Okay, don't go too far.
Sure.
So, Will, who, who makes the decision of whether it goes back to planning and zoning? When he brings it back, I mean, uh, if, if it's a minor change, you don't have to. If it's more major, you do. Who makes that call?
That, it's staff administratively.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we hear from Andrew about what's going on?
Yeah.
He said Andrew would-
Andrew, are you there, Andrew? You look like you're muted. Oh, there, Mike came on.
He's smiling.
Where is he? Oh, there he is.
Good evening, Mayor. Um, yeah, the determination, Will's spot on. The determination is, is generally done administratively as to whether or not it would have to go back to P and Z. Um, you certainly are, are welcome to do so, but because your code requires you to have a hearing, the second hearing if someone requests it, obviously, we have that case tonight, that you probably should, if you're going to refer it back to P and Z, hold your hearing before you do so. So, if that's on the 28th of June, and you wanna send it back to P and Z for more consideration, you can do that, or by that time, it may have already gone back pursuant to the, the staff position on this one. So, uh, either way, the, the June 28th date would work, uh, likely to, um, bring it back to you.
Yes, yeah, the continuance with the stipulation that it goes back to P and Z and before that.
Before?
Is before the June 28th, so the June whatever, the first meet, right?
Aaron, help us out here.
Are you looking for the meeting date of June for P and Z?
Is that feasible?
Mayor, we may wanna have, um, Andrew clarify again. I believe he said have the hearing on the 28th. If we hadn't already administratively sent it back, and after you heard the hearing, then you could send it back. Andrew, is that what you clarified?
That's exactly what I said, Cindy.
Oh.
Very good at that.
So, he's, I'm sorry, I was talking back there. He, we'd have to have a hearing on the 28th and decide if we wanted to go on P and Z. Is that right?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm confused.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if the, if the applicant returns to the staff with what would be considered a major amendment, the staff would then just withdraw from the, the 28th meeting, uh, consideration by the council. It would go back to P and Z, and P and Z might have heard it by the time you get to the 28th in any event. So, there's a chance that it would be the 28th for you either without having P and Z seen it or with P and Z having it.
I understand now. Thank you. It's a pleasure, the council.
But we have to hold a public hearing tonight?
No. No. We can continue this. It would be continued. For June 28th.
Didn't he ask that we do the public hearing before we made that decision?
No, that was if we had to send it back.
Let the attorney talk, would you please?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you can continue the public hearing tonight to the 28th of June. That's fine. You don't have to hold tonight's hearing. Um, before that time, or at that time, if you decided on the 28th, you want P and Z to take another look at it if they hadn't already, you can send it back then. But you won't, won't be required to send it back to P and Z on the 28th. You can make a determination then if you want to.
And just for clarification, Andrew, it is not required to go back to planning and zoning if no major improvements or changes are made, correct? It would just come back to town council on the 28th?
Yes, ma'am. Vice Mayor, that would be the, uh, continuation of the hearing then without anything in between of P and Z.
And at that point, this is just for my clarification, please, and at that point, we can decide to send it back to Planning and Zoning for their recommendation.
Or, or vote on it at that time.
Or vote on it at that time. Okay, thank you.
Discussion.
I think a time to reconsider, re-submit's good. Let everybody have a little more time to work on it.
I think Lon's correct. Are we spinning our wheels? Continuing it? Wasting everybody's time?
I, um-
Wait, 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 wait. We don't holler here.
We're talking about, I mean, he's rec- he's, he's talking about wanting to do a traffic study. Well, and speak with the people of the community some more. I'd be interested in what the traffic study is gonna be. I, I, I don't even know if I should even give my opinion on that part of it or not at this point in time, but.
Right.
Question for the applicant.
Go ahead.
Um, sir, could you step up to the podium, please?
Jeremy Bach, Camp Verde.
Thank you. Do you have, um, the traffic impact analysis study scheduled so that it'll be completed before the 28th?
So, our engineer Craig Baker from SBL is, is handling that. We've gone out to a couple of different groups to be able to get it taken care of. We're, we're going with Vern from ADOT as well to work through some rideaway issues. We don't have it scheduled yet, but it should be done within the next thirty days or less.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't-
You might just wanna hang out.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I guess since we're here, the traffic study, where, what is your plan as far as researching the, the traffic study?
What P and Z requested with both the water and the traffic study is to get a better analysis of what the water and what the traffic potentially will be across the road. The corridor that's going all the way to the other side, right, is also going to be a huge, you know, a, a huge traffic portion. So, what we're gonna be submitting is, you know, a hundred and fifty or whatever. Um, I truly am gonna, going to reach out with Rachel and see if there's something else. We could be coming back with a completely different plan, right? Um, the reason why I didn't reach out with her after the P and Z meeting is because I di- I wanted to be respectful for her for her time. Um, and to be able to take care of that. So, people can, you know, poo-poo and all those other things behind me, but the reality is, is I've been doing this for quite a while, and, um, you, you can check out my reputation. I do do what I say, and, and I try to take care of it. So, that's the point.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious.
But specifically with the traffic study, the scope specifically will be specific to our, will be specific to our project. Um, I, I don't know the ins and outs from that standpoint. I've only done two other traffic studies. They're all done with my engineers specifically for acceleration and deceleration lanes.
Okay, so you are, are you, are you considering, uh, looking at bringing the entrance to the park off of Highway 89?
No, um, the existing layout is what, is what we'd like to try to keep, 'cause it's the least amount of impact to the road 'cause it's closest to the roundabout.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'm just, I'm not in favor of a continuance. I, I, I think like Eric said, we're spinning our wheels. I mean, we're gonna go over and over and over and beat the same subject to death. I just don't see a reason to.
All right, let's, let's just do an emotion for the continuance and see if we're gonna hear this or not.
Can we just breathe for a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Everybody's gonna take a deep breath for, for a second. Procedurally, this is how it works, okay? So, don't throw anything at me, please. Okay, I make a motion that we have a continuance for ordinance 2022-915 to rezone approximately thr- thirty point one five acres of real property from the agricultural residential five acre minimum to commercial heavy with a planned area development overlay for the property located south of 2820 North Road 1 East, Chino Valley, Arizona, APN 30614026A, and the continuation would be until the June 28th meeting.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
There's motion made and seconded.
We have a, I'm sorry, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Would you like a roll call vote, Mayor, on this? Or would you like to continue? Councilmember McCafferty.
Yes.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Nay.
Uh, councilmember Kelly.
Yes.
Councilmember Grineal.
Nay.
Councilmember Turner.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Miller.
Yes.
That is a four-three vote. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay.
May I address the, the public?
No.
No?
No need.
So, we'll move on to-
All right, next item. Can we please have quiet in the- We may wanna get time to clear out. And if you wanna leave, now would be the time. We can take a short break if you wanna check out.
Why weren't we allowed to speak on this issue? Why wasn't I allowed to speak on this issue, Mr. Mayor?
Because it wasn't a public hearing. The continuation was granted. That's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
It's not right. It's not right. You know it. Everybody knows it. We have a position. Everybody knows it.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I think he needs to public, does he publicly need to state that?
Yes.
So, just wait.
When it comes up, then you'll recuse yourself.
No, thank you.
I thought maybe it put a smile on your face.
No.
Well, it's, it's on me. Okay, how many?
Well, boy, everybody went away.
All right, we're gonna get going again.
We got lots more to talk about.
Continuing on item 6B, consideration possible action to approve ordinance number 2022-912 to rezone approximately six point eight six acres of real pop- property from commercial heavy with a planned area development overlay, CHPAD, to commercial light, CL for the property located, excuse me, north of 2625. Can you please close that door? South Highway 89, Chino Valley, Arizona, APN 10201219M. Bethan.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay.
If I can get out of here.
All righty, the beautiful game.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Bethan Heng, planner with the town. Today, the item before you is a res- a request for a rezone for the soccer facility, O Jogo Bonito. The applicant is in attendance tonight. So, the roughly seven acre subject property is located to the southwest corner of the intersection of East Road Four and a Half South and South Road 1 East. To the north of the property is Wendy Plaza and Extra Storage Space Business, and to the south of the property is Horses With Heart. Currently, the subject property is vacant. Now, the rezone, uh, the request to rezone the property from its current zoning of commercial heavy with a planned area development to, sorry, the request is to rezone the property from its current zoning of commercial heavy with a planned area development to commercial light. The applicant intends to rezone so that the property is the same zoning district as the property adjacent to the south for the combined use of a soccer facility, which is permitted by the commercial light district. The surrounding area is mostly commercial light zone with single-family residential two acre minimum across State Route 89 and state land to the east of the property. The rezone to commercial light will be in conformance with a general land use map, which designates the area for commercial multifamily residential. Here is a site plan of the soccer facility. The subject property is within the red box shown here. So, staff brought this to the Planning and Zoning Commission on February 2nd, and the Planning and Zoning Commission forwards a recommendation of approval, of approval for a rezone, ZC dash 2021 dash 18 as presented, subject to the staff report and information provided during this hearing and the conditions of approval found in attachment one. Um, we did note before today's meeting that some of the, the graphics did not come through in the staff report that was in your packet today. Um, so I am going to, um, show you what was on the staff report so that you're not out of the loop of what was in there. So, here's the location map.
I can read very quickly, but not-
Oh, sorry. I will scroll back up for you guys. Let me know when. Okay? Yep. Okay. Oh, okay.
Is it time to, can we ask questions yet, or?
Wouldn't she?
I think we're still reading.
Still reading?
No. I'm sorry, I'm, scrolled down.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, here, so here's this, the proposed site plan. Here's another site plan of the property and the project. Um, the applicant proposed that the project will be completed in two phases. And then we have the zoning map and the general land use map. Are there any other parts of the document that you guys are wanting to view before, um, I go to the recommendation?
I was kind of interested in the one you were just on, and I also had a question, um, that's for later. If you could just keep scrolling for me, please.
Yes.
Okay, we're at seven of eighteen, eight of eighteen?
Yep. So, the rest would be, um, just conditions of approval.
Are those in our packet?
Those should be in your packet.
I'm sorry, you waiting on me? I was reading.
Uh, no, I was waiting on these guys. Um, but at this time, I will open up the floor for uh, questions and discussion.
Okay, go ahead and start down there, boys, if you have questions, but.
No, I pretty well reviewed this. Thank you.
Okay.
Eric? No, I have nothing.
Lon?
No questions.
I'm good, I think. Annie?
It's not in the fire district?
There's a chunk of land that's like an island out there that's not.
Um, I saw that in the application report that the um. Proposed developer was going to use artificial turf and grass. So that's encouraging to hear. Is that phase one or phase two?
So that will be a question for the applicant.
Is he here?
Yes.
Can you come up, please?
Thank you, Bethan.
How are you doing tonight?
Good, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Glenn Dayulow, and my wife and I are the ones proposing to build a soccer facility. And phase one will be all artificial turf. The only one we would consider, but is very doubtful, would be the future eleven V eleven field on the north parcel. But right now, we're intending to make that artificial turf as well. It gets much more use and less, lot less maintenance, although the costs upfront are a lot more.
Turf burn.
Yeah.
That it, Annie?
Though that, yeah, that's all I have.
Tom?
I'm good.
All right. Anything for any further questions for Bethan or the owner?
No.
No.
I would, but I lost all my papers. I was digging. Thank you. You can have, you're good.
Thank you.
Um, all right, I make a motion. We. Approve ordinance two zero two two dash nine one two to rezone approximately six point eight six acres of real property. For commercial heavy with the planned area development overlay, C H P A D to commercial light for the property located. North of two six two five, South State Route eighty nine, Chino Valley, Arizona, accessory parcel number one zero two zero one two one nine M.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You can come back up, John.
The beautiful game.
Yeah.
I love it.
Please.
Okay.
There you go. All right, item C. Consideration possible action regarding ordinance twenty twenty two nine fourteen. To rezone one acre of approximately fourteen point seven nine acres of real property. From AR five agricultural residential five acre minimum zoning district to C L. Commercial light zoning district applicant Ralph Baker, address nine nine five east road one north parcel. Three oh six two three zero four eight A. Will.
Hi, Will. Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. Uh, Will Denji, Senior Planner here with the town of Chino Valley. Before you use a request to rezone one acre of real property from the AR five agricultural residential five acre minimum zoning district. To the commercial light uh, zoning district C L in order to divide the property. The applicant Ralph Baker on behalf of CVID is in attendance this evening.
What is that?
It's a dead bulb. Not getting shot at yet. The almost fifteen acre subject property is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of East Road one north and North Road one east. To the west of the property is Danny Bee's and Ranch Plaza. To the south is the Prescott, um, city of Prescott main water well site. And then to the east is the Highlands Ranch subdivision. For the last forty years, the northeast corner of this property outlined in blue. Has been used as the office for CVID as well as a storage yards yard for their operations. Currently, this use is nonconforming within the AR five zoning district, but is considered grandfather due to how long it has been in operation. This request is a little different than any of the others rezonings that have been before the council in the past. As it only pertains to a portion of the property, again, outlined in blue on this subject map. Uh, the, this is due to requesting um, only to split off that one acre where their operation is being held. Staff has conditioned this item that the rezoning and the split of the property will occur at the same time. So if the rezoning is approved, the split will also occur um, at the same time in order to avoid any sort of nonconforming. Lot creations. The general plan, land use designation of this parcel, as well as the parcels to the north, south, and west, is considered multifamily commercial. Um, the requested zoning district of C L is in conformance with the general plan land use designation. An immediate area commercial uh, light can be found in the west of the subject property along the boundaries of State Route eighty nine. The commercial zoning district allows for business, excuse me, businesses and professional offices. If the rezoning request is approved, it will bring this historic use on this property into conformance. Uh, this item went before the Planning and Zoning Commission at the beginning of this month, and the Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded a recommendation of approval. Um, for this case as presented, subject to the staff report and information provided during this hearing and conditions of approval found within attachment A. And with that, I will open it up to questions or discussion from the council.
Can you throw attachment?
Attachment two.
Two up on there, please. Thank you.
So the the CVID building will stay, the one acre will stay intact.
Define intact.
It'll stay the one acre for the CVID. I mean, the building will stay there.
Correct.
They're not getting rid of the building. CVID headquarters will still be there on the one acre.
And it will split into a separate APN?
Correct, yep. Um, it's fifteen, roughly fifteen acres, so it'll have a one acre chunk for the CVID operation and then thirteen and change, almost fourteen acres. Remaining as AR five.
And that brings them into compliance?
Yes, it does.
Will, did the town approach him or the the CVID to make this happen? Well, because they've been noncompliant, you know, conforming noncompliance for forty years. What motivated the sudden need to have this done?
So I can let the applicant answer that. We, the town didn't approach them. They they approached us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions down on this side?
No.
So is the applicant here?
The applicant is, he's over there.
Okay. Well, can he answer his question?
Sure. I think he was. He was kind of nodding off screen.
Oh.
Thanks for the warning vest.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor, Council. My name's Ralph Baker. I'm the irrigation manager for CVID. Uh, this came about because we found out we weren't in compliance. And we wanted to bring us into compliance to be a friendly neighbor. Uh, originally, this was going to be zoned all commercial. We had some opposition to the neighbors. We went back and to rectify the problem and to make them happy. Will and the town came up with an idea that this will break off one acre. The other thirteen will stay the way it is. The neighbors greatly appreciated that. You know, we're coming to compliance. The neighbors are happy. No change in traffic, no nothing. No additional water usage or anything like that. So it's basically just the way you see it, it's the way it's going to stay.
Thank you.
Anything else this side?
Not for me.
Mr. Baker, you, CVID is keeping the land?
We're keeping the land.
Oh.
All we're doing is bringing the office and our storage facility to comply with the commercial zoning. That it should have been originally years ago.
Sure.
Uh, it was an oversight before I was even around, so. So, uh, I kind of brought it up to him. I said, hey, we're kind of a commercial building here and we're in, you know, an ag, you know. Property. We should, as a good neighbor, bring it up to, you know, to comply with the system. And the board agreed with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll entertain motion.
I will make a motion. We approve ordinance. I'm sorry.
I can't hear you.
Can we, public comment?
In your microphone.
Uh, public comment?
Uh, you can entertain public comment. If somebody wants to speak on it?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Have we, I I'm just saying, have we offered that?
We have not.
It is not a requirement on this, um, and I will let you know I did not have anybody fill out a comment card.
That's all I want to know.
Okay.
I will make a motion. We approve ordinance two zero two two dash nine one four to rezone. Z C dash two zero two one dash zero one seven. As presented, subject to the staff report and information provided during this hearing and the conditions in approval in attachment two.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. It's up to you, Mr. Turner.
Make a motion adjourned.
Second.
All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.